Always a pleasure to see you. If you'll call the roll, please, Erica.
Councilmember McKay.
Here.
Councilmember Fisickelli.
Here.
Councilmember Bray Cruz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jablonski.
Here.
Mayor Nelson.
Here. Listen, Erica, I answer most things. Here. We all stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we get started, we have a proclamation in recognition of the Broward County Diversity Community Month. And I believe, Mr. Webster, are you here? If I can get you to come up, I'm going to come down there and join you and read this down there at that microphone, if it's okay with you. And then we're going to get the council to come down and take a photograph. Good to see you. Thank you. And give you an opportunity to say a few words, if you'd like. Okay, proclamation. This is, again, in recognition of Broward County Diversity Month. Whereas the Broward County Diversity Advisory Council has provided, since its founding in the 1990s, a Broward County multi-ethnic advisory board leadership on diversity and inclusion. And whereas the Broward County Diversity Advisory Council has joined with the public and private organizations and community partnerships since 2002 to acknowledge, celebrate, value, embrace, and respect Broward County's documented diversity. And whereas partnering agencies work together to improve inter-ethnic relations, multicultural dialogue, and inclusive economic, social, and political opportunities for each of Broward's 1.8 million citizens. And whereas Broward County is a multiculturally significant region and market in the United States. And whereas Broward County has over 204 nations represented and over 130 languages spoken and known by our students and the parents. That information is from the school board of Broward County. We know that's accurate. And whereas, over the past 20 years, the Broward County Diversity Advisory Council has helped Broward County recognize, embrace, and respect Broward's rich diversity, moving the county closer to becoming a culture of inclusion at every level of community life. Now therefore be proclaimed by the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, hereby designating the month of January 2014 as Broward County Diversity Community Month. Congratulations. Thank you for being here. May respectfully wait till everybody gets comfortable again.
You're going to have to speak to that mic a little bit closer.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, staff, good evening. As the current Chair of Broward County's Diversity Advisory Council, I thank the town of Southwest Ranches for presenting this council with the proclamation as we all celebrate the county's 12th Annual Diversity and Inclusive Committee, Community Month. The county commission will be notified of your appreciated recognition. The council was established by the Board of County Commissioners in 1990 to examine issues affecting the county's diverse community, and it has strived to be a leader in the promotion of diversity since its inception. Since becoming Chair in 2012, the Diversity Council has increased its outreach to all of Broward County's towns, cities, from two perspectives. The first is the council's identification and celebration of the accomplishment of our diverse majority-minority county. And the second is the establishment of a stronger relationship with the county's towns and cities so that it can receive and share information about diversity issues across all of them. We continue to invite towns such as yours to provide us with information about projects, activities, and celebrations that will be happening so that we can have a countywide sharing of this type of information. And I've already started talking with staff about this. This proclamation is one step in this process of collaboration, and the Diversity Advisory Council looks forward to Southwest Ranches' continued input. Thank you very, very much.
Mr. Webster, thank you, and great to see you. And keep up the wonderful work that you're doing on behalf of the committee. And again, anytime you're in the town of Southwest Ranches, stop by and say hello. Always a pleasure to see you. Yes, sir. Okay, item number four, public comment.
The rules for public comment are located on the agenda. The first speaker is Vince Valetta, followed by the last speaker, Mike Hanley.
What happened to gay?
Vince Valetta, Arrow Box 291507, Davie, Florida. A good evening and a happy new year, which I didn't get a chance to do that on January 14. I guess January 14, the council, in their wisdom, rewarded the many people on the staff, and justly so, in their opinion. But you forgot the folks. Meeting for a year and a half, we have some historical equipment that we gave to the town in order to display it for the town, or over the years that we have saved this stuff, and we gave it to the town. And they had turned it over to the Historical Society, but the Historical Society is not an arm of the town. It's a 501(c). And it is not controlled by any portion of the town, either by budget or by ruling. So we're waiting for the council to decide when and where they're going to start doing something for the folks, for our historical stuff that we gave them. And it was a lot of stuff. Thank you.
Mike Hanley.
Mike Hanley, 205 Avenue, Southwest Ranches. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, and all the friends here. I have no children and anticipate having no children in Southwest Ranches. Mine are in California. But they're proposing to build a charter school out in our area by Pembroke Pines. I want to suggest that I'm in favor of having this school there for a multitude of reasons. Number one, I think a school is a better idea in that area than to put a prison in there. And weed zone to put in a prison, and perhaps we should help Pembroke Pines get the proper zoning so that they could put the school in so that we wouldn't have to file a lawsuit to object. I understand our lawsuit is because they didn't do proper zoning as per their own procedures, and that perhaps we don't want 208 as a road out there. I, secondly, feel that every ingress and egress to Griffin Road is benefit for us to get to and from, work to and from, grocery store to and from, the doctor, drugstores, veterinarian, et cetera. We shouldn't be isolating our roads. We should be expanding them and allowing people to enjoy their royal lifestyle instead of putting all the traffic on one or two or three streets. Perhaps we could go to bed with Pembroke Pines and get them to help us approach the county or the feds into expanding Griffin Road all the way to 27 from Bonaventure Boulevard, and maybe that would alleviate our traffic. I think it would be beneficial for the students of Southwest Ranches to get to that charter school, however they get there. Perhaps some of them could even walk from the area I live in, since they're no longer allowed to go to Cypress Bay. And in a private talk with the mayor, he said that Cypress Bay is overcrowded and West Broward is underserviced. I don't know why a high school of the charter school nature would not be beneficial and increase our property values in that area as well. Lastly, I think we could save some money by not having this, what I feel is a frivolous lawsuit from Southwest Ranches against Pembroke Pines. I'm sure that in their wisdom as a city council, they can get the proper zoning to put in that charter school. And I'm sure it would benefit all the students that live in Southwest Ranches and Pembroke Pines and other communities that want to go to a charter high school in lieu of Cypress Bay, which our Southwest Ranches cannot get to. And maybe they don't want to go to Broward, West Broward, because they can't get through on 202, 205, and 199. That's all I have to say. I'm in favor of the school. I wish the council would reconsider the lawsuit and save the expense of proceeding with it, because Pembroke Pines didn't even show up yesterday, and they explained that Keith will now have to get his funding for that consultation meeting or the setting of the differences between the two areas, since Pembroke Pines didn't say up. Now he says they're responsible for paying him. Why don't we stop all these lawsuits? Yeah?
We have two other speakers, Joanne Hollingsworth, followed by Mary Gay Chaples, who's the last speaker.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, and Administrator. My name is Joanne Hollingsworth. I live on Southwest 199th Avenue in the town of Southwest Ranches, and I am in favor of these roads remaining closed. I hope I didn't misunderstand what Mr. Hanley said, but the charter school is not going where the detention center would have been. So I hope that I misunderstood what he said when he said that. The other thing is, our tax, part of our tax money goes to these charter schools. And quite frankly, I would personally see, prefer that my tax money go to the public schools as originally was intended, rather than sharing with these charter schools. So I am not in favor of this. I believe the traffic will be a problem over there. And we have not had very good results trying to deal with Pembroke Pines in the past, and they haven't been very respectful of us. So I really don't think it's a good idea to get involved with them right now. Thank you.
Okay. I was going to talk about, first of all, that I'm working on trying to get some of the nurseries, possibly four, to adopt the mediums along Griffin Road. And I have one commitment, possibly three. And we're just at the beginning of that stage, but they can put, kind of like Adopt a Road, it would be, this strip of medium is adopted by this particular nursery. It'll give them a chance to kind of compete against one another. As long as they keep it, you know, they don't get too ornate, they can do the whole mediums and we won't have to pay for it. We're figuring possibly a year, at least. And that way, we can kind of get these mediums and the shoulder on the south side cleaned up and presented the way it should be. Everybody else is in good shape except for us. But I was listening to all of this, and I really want to address some of it. The Historical Society has not been sitting on its hands, but we have just gotten a room. We have put our stuff in there. Dee is the president, and she has been working diligently, trying to come up with different ideas on displaying and so on and so forth. But I have also been in touch with, not Beverly Hills, Lord, that's where I go every Friday, Applebee's, who gave us some of the pictures, and they're going to give us all of their stuff, which is the fire department and all of the pictures that are up there. They're going to donate. When we get those, then we'll have kind of a presentation from them that they gave us all these framed pictures that go back in our history. So we're not, we're just not having a bunch of people come in yet until we are organized enough that everybody diligently can sit down and work on a project. So we're not letting it sit. That's why I'm no longer president, because I just don't have the time. I'm spread thinner than butter, hot butter. So Dee said she'd love to run with it, and I said, be my guest. And she was elected by the board, and she took over, and that's where we're headed with it. As far as a charter school is concerned, my daughter is a teacher at Hawks Bluff. I talked to Mrs. Good, who is a representative, and she told me they have closed several charter schools in Broward County, because they're just not able to cut it. I find it rather interesting, the charter schools, and the one out there that they want to build, is in business. And because they're in business, they're going to use this, they're going to take the money out of our public school system, and they're going to educate the children, and they're going to make money off of that. Now, our public school system is either misappropriating a lot of money, or they're educating our children with that same amount of money. So I'm just wondering how you can make money running a school, because I know how much a private school costs to run, because I see the bills over there at McCarthy High School, and I know how much it is for my grandkids to go there. So, and they get a good education. But that should not be the reason that we're going to support this or not. We have a lot of people that live in this town, plus Weston, who use Bonaventure Boulevard and come out onto Griffin. And that road ends just beyond Bonaventure and becomes a two-lane road. I'm not objecting to this school. What I'm objecting to is the traffic impact, and until they can address all of that and the lighting, we have no control over the lighting. They originally were going to put in townhouses in there, 47 of them. Now they're talking about a big stadium with lights. And we will not be able to deal with Pembroke Pines. In the past, we have not been able to. I can guarantee you, we're not going to deal with them now. They will tell us to go pound sand, in plain English. So you can do what you want, but I think you have to look at the safety measures as far as that school is concerned and the traffic impact. We got to have it four-laned all the way, and I don't want to pay for it so that they can have a school in Pines. I don't want to pay for it. If Pines is going to go along with it, let them pay for the four lanes going out to 27.
Okay, we got to finish up. I've extended the time.
The only other thing I wanted to say was...
And we always want to hear what you have to say.
On the, huh?
We always want to hear what you have to say.
Was, somebody called me today, and they were out west, and they couldn't get into their drive because somebody parked their car right in front of their drive, blocked them, they couldn't get in. And the kid was up the street that owned the car. They didn't know that. So she called the police. Make a long story short, she wanted the car towed out or moved away, and she didn't get much satisfaction. Finally, the kid showed up and he drove his car away. So my question to you people is, what do we do when somebody blocks the drive? I know when you're having a big party, we don't block people's drives. I mean, when we go to somebody's house, they're parked on both sides of the street, but nobody blocks the drives. They could have put this car on an easement, and they didn't, and we couldn't find the owner of the car at the time. So do you tow it, move it? What is the procedure? Because they didn't do anything, and she had somebody there wanting to get into the drive, and they left. They were there for a service. So it cost her on both ends, you know? So that's it.
I see. Andy is shaking his head and paying attention to you. I suspect we'll have an answer for you. Thank you. That concludes public comment. Item number five, board reports. Any members, any boards have any information? Always a pleasure to see you, Ms. Hartman.
You're always generous, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to, I guess, inform the council that the Drainage and Infrastructure Advisory Board is going to go on a bit of a hiatus. You know, we're probably a little different than the other boards. We work very closely with the town engineer. I mean, I could safely say in front of other members of the team that we run Willie's meeting when Willie was here. We run the town engineer's meeting. It's really his meeting to report to us, to ask for prioritization, to ask for guidance on the various items that he works for, that he works on. And I've discussed it with, no members of the board. We didn't have a meeting. But I've discussed it with a number of others, and I think the conventional wisdom is, until we get a new town engineer, we should probably go on hiatus. If something pops up, we can certainly have our meeting, but until we get a new town engineer, we're kind of, there isn't a lot for us to work on. To work with the Winningham-Fradley temporary engineer doesn't really make any sense from a financial standpoint or from an information standpoint. They'd only be sitting in a post, showing up at a meeting, billing the town, and passing that information on to the next person. So just a heads up, we've already canceled, and we'll wait for guidance from the town administrator on when we should get fired back up again after a town engineer is hired. Just one comment I wanted to make to the town, that I made to the town administrator that I want to suggest to all of you. A big part of the town engineer's job is project management. You know, Willie did it, and Al Prior did it to various degrees of success. As you look at the next candidates for the next town engineer, you may want to look at their project management background. And Councilmember Bray Cruz, I think you can relate, since that's a big part of what you do as well. If we get somebody who has been a town engineer for a town that doesn't do projects the way we do them, you might have a fish out of water. So I'd focus on that as part of the interviewing process. I think it'll serve you well in the long run. Thank you.
Good advice, Bob. Thank you.
On the parks board?
I jokingly said, "you" again?
Oh, it's a good thing we have a good relationship. Otherwise. Anyway, what I would like is, we would like to have at least another member from out west on the parks board, if possible. If any of you know of anybody who would like to sit on the parks board, I think that we need their input from out west. And also, even in Green Meadows, Deans Ranches area. I've exhausted every avenue I know, and there isn't many that want to give up their time, to be honest with you. So they think everything's great, and they're not worried about it, so they don't need to sit on a board. But we could use somebody from out west, definitely, because there's a lot going on out there, and I think that it would help if they could, you know, jump in. The other thing is, we did talk about, one thing, December is going to get a, and I don't understand it, but she asked for volunteers to go out there and count trees and identify them and so on and so forth. And Astor's Foundation had offered to pay to do it for, I think it runs about $7,000, to hire professionals to do it. And the whole point was to familiarize the people with our inventory and what we have, and how valuable it is, and how costly they are. And so we voted to go ahead and let December run this group and see how it goes, but we have Astor sitting in the wings as backup in case we get in trouble. And, you know, it just overwhelms us. So it's not something we are familiar with, but we're going to take a shot at it and try to get more people in the town involved in doing the inventory and being aware. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Kay. Any other board member comments? Board member comments or board reports now closed. Item number six, council member comments. Anybody want to volunteer to go first? No? No comments, Doug?
I'm good.
Steve?
Yeah, I'm happy to go. Yeah, just a couple of things, as they say. First one, I wanted to mention the traffic workshop for the area between 185th and 190th is coming up on the 27th at 7:00. So I want to encourage everybody to come out for that, especially if you live in that area. There's a lot of traffic issues and things. We had the initial workshop where we gathered a lot of ideas. The engineer has been working on that, and we'll be coming back with recommendations on the 27th, on Monday. So I would just encourage everybody to come out. A lot of work has gone into that. I know there's a lot of folks interested in that, so please, please make sure that, if you can attend, that you do. The other thing that I did want to touch on was the charter school. I just want to make sure that we're clear on that, at least from my perspective. Certainly, this is in no way a, you know, we're not against schools. I'm certainly not against schools. I don't think anybody sitting up here is against schools. What we are, what my concern is, is the traffic and the impact to the area out there that it will generate. That's a very large school, and will generate an incredible amount of traffic. And, you know, that road that was originally going to be put in there by Pembroke Pines was originally supposed to help the flow of traffic between the two areas, which was their prerogative to do. It's all in their town. But it turns out, because I went to one of their meetings and I asked the question, it turns out that that road is not going to be an open road to allow traffic to go back and forth. They're going to funnel all the traffic into Southwest Ranches and Griffin Road. So it's interesting that we will take the brunt of the traffic, and they will, you know, benefit everything else. So it's unfortunate that they have approached it the way they have. It's unfortunate that they are putting the majority of the impact on Southwest Ranches. You know, I think if they were going to live up to what they said, they would just open that road so it was free and clear both directions. And then I think, I would feel a whole lot better if they did that. But the bottom line is that that's not how they approached it. It's a shame, but it is what it is, and it's important for us, sitting on the council, to protect the lifestyle that we were elected, been put up here to protect. And the traffic is a big part of that. And so certainly, there's nothing in the school itself that is a negative or a bad thing. Schools are good things. But it's unfortunate the way it was approached in this particular case. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Eric?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Good evening. Just a couple of things. First, I want to thank the council for attending last week's recovery resource meeting. I was unable to attend, and I'm sure Andy's going to give us an update on that. And I just want to thank everybody who went and on all the towns' behalf. It's going to be very valuable to us in the future on that. The other thing I wanted to ask, and just wanted to, like, poll the council informally, is there's a lot of talk right now about the, I'll make sure I say this right, the electronic cigarette, and how that's available now to minors. And I'm sure you've, some of you've got the email from Mike Ryan, Mayor of Sunrise and stuff. I'm wondering if you guys are interested in drafting an ordinance prohibiting that sale of those nicotine-based products? And, you know, we have very little retail, but we do have retail in our area. And I was wondering if you'd like to direct the legal department?
Sure. Yeah, I'll support you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely. And to take it a step even further, it was about a month and a half or two months ago, Andy, when it came, we had a discussion about going to find out if we have any commercial establishments that indeed sell those, e-whatever those things are, to first confirm that they are in our town. And secondly, if they do, quite frankly, this was something I was going to bring before you all as well. So I'm glad that you brought it forward, too, Gary. And we do have, I believe, one establishment that's, two, that sell those e-cigarettes. And so this is something we're going to bring before you anyway. And absolutely, not only supportive, but we've already done the research to confirm we do sell them in the town, and there is, you know, an opportunity to address it and get on board with stopping it.
Thank you, Mayor. That was all I had.
Thanks, Gary. Freddie?
Yeah. I guess my main comments are going to be about fishing hole park.
Absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely. And to take it a step even further, it was about a month and a half or two months ago, Andy, when it came, we had a discussion about going and find out if we have any commercial establishments that indeed sell those e-whatever those things are, to first confirm that they are in our town. And secondly, if they do, quite frankly, this was something I was going to bring before you all as well. So, I'm glad that you brought it forward, too, Gary. And we do have, I believe, one establishment that's, two, that sell those e-cigarettes. And so, this is something we're going to bring before you anyway. And absolutely, not only supportive, but we've already done the research to confirm we do sell them in the town, and there is, you know, an opportunity to address it and get on board with stopping it.
Thank you, Mayor. That was all I had.
Thanks, Gary. Freddie?
Yeah. Yeah, I guess my main comments are going to be about Fishing Hole Park. What I did this past week, I called Andy and asked him to have a meeting on some of the problems that's going on out there. And I think we resolved a lot of them. It's not complete, but we have, I think the biggest one right now, like I brought up, was the security department. Right now, I went out there again yesterday, the gate's wide open. And what we've got to do, we've got to close it up. And we decided at the little meeting we had with the people involved, with Emily and December, and Andy and myself, was we're going to put up a temporary gate as a main gate on the south side to allow that company to store in the trees to get in and out. But now, to do that, when we put in the one before, myself and my son did that, I volunteered to give, to bring the gate back, but I'm not volunteering to bring the help back. So, we're going to be looking for some people to help us do that particular gate. Emily is already looking at something about repair and defense on the west side, and then we could pretty well close the park up. I think it's time that we start operating it as a park certain hours. There's a couple of reasons, and we need to close those things up first, and that is the tree companies working in there. And December's going to talk to him about it. And I went out there and looked again this week. They're not doing anything about filling the holes or doing anything in there. We're allowing people to go in there and ride horses, and those holes are dangerous. So, we need to either get him on the ball and get those holes cleaned, so we can clear that area if they want to walk. You know, we can't really tell them to stay on the trail. They have a tendency, I guess they see more everywhere they want to walk. But that was another problem that we're going to try to handle. December's not here tonight, I don't think. Yeah, I know she had a meeting all day today, but she was going to talk to Mario and see if we could solve that problem, where he could go in there and start doing like I thought he was going to do, fill the holes as they go, and leave it to where we could even start mowing it. But I have, we don't have any answer on that yet. On the parking lot, you know, when we did the original job, we used those plastic bumpers, and they're really not working out. I think I might, I might say something here, if not, but didn't we have to do that for to do, get the grant? Yeah. Yeah. But now, she, I know Emily's working on getting them replaced with concrete, which would be a lot better, and we'd get them put in there properly, anyway. And the mitigation area is, she's working on that. She's going out for bids to get that mitigation area clean. We had a bid this past week, or maybe it was even, yeah, I think you did it this week, right, with Mike? But Mike Schroeder has got the job to finish, to start the piece that I started, to fill that whole area in there. And he, but he's been tied up. Is he going to start Monday, you think, Emily, now? Yeah, I know he's been tied up. He had a couple of things, but he may get started. And he's only got a day's work in there, really, to finish the fill. But he, I'm hoping that he's going to start that Monday. And speaking of fill, the engineering firm found a company that wants to give us more fill, and they're going to start hauling fill in there again tomorrow morning. We had hoped that Mike would have the fill out onto the other place, but we're trying to work out something where this is similar to the fill that we got before. But we're going to get that done. And, let's see, and I know Emily's working on getting up, working up the bid for the horse trail. The last, really, the last thing is Benny's work, and Andy may going to talk about it a little bit on his time, but he still hasn't finished. He's still got some things that the engineers told him he hasn't done, and he hasn't done those yet. It's close. He's done a lot of the things, but he's still got a lot to do before he's finished. We've been very fortunate. We've got a lot of rain this time of the year, and it's making the grass look pretty good just in there right now. It's coming along. But, let's see, I think I get everything covered, and what we're doing over there, like I say, is, right now, not a lot going on. We're just trying to get the thing. I think it's time that we get the gates up so we can lock it at night, open it in the morning. Otherwise, the way it is, I was up there yesterday, and the two main gates were wide open. Nobody was working there. I went all the way around to make sure Mark, he wasn't in there. They weren't in there pulling any trees. So, it's, and one other thing I'm going to cover under comments, and I'm sorry, Andy, that I didn't think about this when we had our meeting with you. But at our last meeting, you know, I was disagreement with a lot of things that went on, and y'all kept telling me it's going to happen at the next meeting. Well, there's nothing on the agenda tonight that is happening, so I'm disappointed that we were going to be talking about how we can do something towards retirement and everything, because that was one of the things I objected to the raises, because I would have liked to have seen that money went towards its retirement packages, but that didn't happen. And Andy, I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance to talk to you about it when we did all our things yesterday. That's all I got.
Thank you, Freddie. I know you touched on that, Andy, and I know there's a reason we had postponed it. Lot of additional research and questions that all of us had as part of that process to educate ourselves as to not only what was contemplated, but also the different potential for other plans. So, that was one of the reasons why we had postponed it Friday. Just a lot of information in a very short period of time. But it's going to be coming back up before the council in the very near future, if not the next council meeting, I suspect sometime sooner after. And Andy, you can comment on that during administration comments. And I know you want to cover Resource Recovery Board and whatever I don't cover, Andy, and that'll probably be a lot, I know that you'll supplement what I said. I want to thank Doug and Freddie. I know Gary and Steve, you have very busy schedules. I know you would have been there if it was possible. It's just a very difficult time. But 17 municipalities, where there were the others that weren't part of the lawsuit that were also there listening in. And one of my comments was, it's, you know, it's unprecedented, and it's good to see all those people. And we had an opportunity to say hello, and just very unique and very different environment, but it was good to see all the other municipalities and their representatives there. As you know, they wanted to, the county wanted to extend it three more months, an opportunity to talk some more and to make a long story short, with the exception that we're prepared to go to court. We feel we have a very good case, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And that was the consensus, too, of the county commission members as well. When it came time, and there was a mediator, the mediator's already been assigned to with this case, so he was there and very highly qualified and well-spoken retired judge. And then all of a sudden, an opportunity to speak, all the municipalities. So, he started working their way around the room, and I think they got through probably seven or eight municipalities. And everybody essentially said, you know, you've had an opportunity for a year and a half or two years to get this information. We can't get it from you, so that's the reason why we want to make this next step. Why would 90 days make a difference when you've had a couple of years to get this reconciled? So, as they were getting the confirmation from the municipalities as to which direction that they wanted to pursue, all seven, it was unanimous, to go to the mediation process. So, we took a five-minute break. County met with the mediator and with Jamie Cole, who was the lead counsel on this case, and came back five or 10 minutes later and said that we agreed to mediation, which was a good thing. But it kind of leads me into this next thing, and that's, you know, this 164 process that we've used previously, that any time you have an opportunity to have a discussion, constructive conversation, doesn't necessarily mean that you're going to get things resolved, but at least you have an opportunity to talk. And very disappointed what happened on Wednesday, when Andy and Keith were scheduled to meet as part of this 164 process, to meet with Charlie Dodge, the city manager, and the, whoever, I assume it was Sam, whatever, legal representative that they would have here as a part of that process. I think that it was close, because Charlie, I think, pulled into our parking lot, you know, anticipating that he's going to be here to have that conversation. Pulled in, and a couple of minutes later, he was on the phone and turned around and left. So, I'm not sure what transpired or what happened as part of that process. I wish I could have heard the phone call. Would have been very interesting, I'm sure. But also remember that we've been involved in this conflict mediation with Pines before and utilized Chapter 164. And if you remember, we gave them an opportunity to waive this process. And what did they tell us? No way, no how. We want to, we think this process is important, and so we want to have these meetings, which we did with administration and then the subsequent meeting with councils. So, it's kind of a confusing message that we get from Pembroke Pines. But with that being said, that concludes my comments, and that concludes council member comments. Item number seven, Michelle, any legal comments?
I know you covered it well with the 164, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Michelle. It's good to see you.
Thank you.
Item number eight, administration comments.
She's always much faster than Keith.
That's right.
I do have a few things, Mayor. And we'll start off with conflict resolution, Chapter 164. Both actions, the issue with the county from last Friday, I think you summarized it well. There were, there was a quorum there, obviously, from Southwest Ranches, from 17 other municipalities, as well as the county commission, along with a whole lot of town managers and attorneys. And it was quite the gathering in that room. And the county came into that meeting resistant to going forward with mediation, that they had wanted to have more time for staff to work through the issues. But the last time we had asked them for dates of when we could schedule that staff meeting, they didn't come across with any dates. And so, they didn't cooperate with that process. So, from our side, we did try to get together. We tried to have those further staff meetings prior to, but the county was resistant to that. We went into the meeting last week, and I guess they saw the writing on the wall. It was very clear that the municipalities that were present all felt strongly that we needed to move towards mediation. We're so far apart on this that we need to get a little help to get this resolved. And it's certainly not a rush to the courtroom, but it is a rush to have a mediator sit down with both sides and keep the discussion moving forward in a positive manner. So, certainly a very important step. Hopefully, the litigation down the road will not be necessary, and that we'll be successful with the, working with the mediator. So, that's where we are with that. Yesterday's conflict resolution here with Pembroke Pines, we were set up in the front of the room. Keith and I were here, so it was staff level, not elected level at that point, because you start with staff level before electeds get together. Pines chose not to play. I will tell you that I'm disappointed. It was an opportunity for Charlie Dodge and I to sit down with Keith and with Sam and try to advance this discussion. I think we have some legitimate concerns. You're talking about building a charter school with 2,600 students, plus staff, plus faculty, plus deliveries and everything else. You're talking about three, almost 3,000 people every day in and out in an area of Griffin Road that's one lane each way. So, there are impacts. It's not to say school's good, bad, or anything else, but there are impacts to be considered, and we want to make sure that those impacts are properly considered, properly mitigated, properly dealt with. So, we were hopeful that we'd be able to advance that discussion with Pines yesterday. Unfortunately, we weren't able to do that, so. Councilmember Fiskelli spoke about Fishing Hole Park. Just to add to that, the one thing I do want to add is we did have the contractor in yesterday. He has been, I'll say, dragging his feet. So, what we did yesterday was gave him an absolute drop-dead date of next Friday to complete the punch list and get that done. And he was forewarned that sanctions would follow, that we would use the terms of the contract to penalize him as need be, in order to provide the incentive to get that work done. So, you know, we're almost there. There's punch list items that need to be completed. It hasn't gotten done, so we used what we had at our disposal to try to light a fire and get those things done. So, I'm very hopeful that those things will get done over the next week. Councilmember Fiskelli mentioned retirement and FRS, and I know it was our hope to have that on the discussion for tonight, but I've gotten some very good questions and concerns from various members of the council. Marty and I are working on that. And what I didn't want to do was get in a position where we brought it forward tonight, and we weren't in a position to answer all your questions. I'm comfortable that we're going to have that information for you for our first meeting in February, and that we'll be ready for, certainly, council to consider taking action at that point. But I didn't want to erase that information and give it to you with too short a period of time for you to review it coming into tonight's meeting. I wanted to make sure that you had an appropriate time to go through that. So, it is very much on our front burner. We are working on that, really, on a daily basis. So, that'll be for you at the next meeting. Just one note on bulk. Just want to let you know that Inner City, who is a subcontractor who is used by Waste Management and then by SWS, is no longer collecting bulk in the town of Southwest Ranches. SWS has added some new trucks to their fleet. Sun Bergeron has some trucks as well. So, the trucks that will be doing our bulk pickup are all, I'll say, more directly under their control, not with the subcontractor. We're having some issues with the subcontractor, with communicating with them, and their service levels were not what we wanted them to be. They had some older trucks. They were leaking hydraulic fluid. There were just some issues that SWS is rectifying and cleaning up. But I'm hopeful that some of the issues we've had with bulk in the past will be just that in the past, and that we'll be better off going forward. The transition from BSO to Davie is going along as well as can be expected. The BSO, I'm sorry, the Davie chief will be here tomorrow afternoon to talk about some more of the transition issues. They've been invited to attend the Rolling Oaks meetings and the Sunshine Ranches HOA meetings next week. But I do want to take a moment and thank Chief Baranski and BSO. They've been nothing but professional and extremely cooperative in all ways as we've worked through the transition, and I'm certainly thankful for that. So, I wanted to share that with you. I may embarrass Michelle for just a moment. I believe this is her last meeting with us, as I think she's leaving the firm. And Michelle, I just wanted to take a moment, and I wanted to thank you for your advice, for your candor, and most of all, your sense of humor. We'll miss you, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
And last but not least, Mayor, the next item on the agenda, item nine, is coming out of the Comprehensive Plan, Planning Board, and it's adopting an annual schedule for capital improvements. Prior to that, separate from that, I do have a document that I want to share with, or several documents to share with you, which I'm going to pass out to you. Mention has been made previously about the economic impact study that was prepared primarily by Marty Sherwood, the comparing commercial versus residential. That study has been complete. It's been to the Comprehensive Planning Board, and they have, I think they made some suggestions that Marty incorporated, but that board has accepted that study. I have that for you. I also have the recommendations on commercial, if there's going to be commercial, what those guidelines would be coming out of the Comprehensive Planning Board, to share with you this evening. And so, I have that information to share with you. We don't have a presentation on that specifically. That is something I want to share with you all, because it's now been through the proper channels coming out of the advisory board. So, I do want to share that with you and let you know that that will be scheduled for further discussion at a future meeting. And that concludes my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Andy. Sure, Gary.
The economic impact study that you have, is that the one that you sent out electronically, I think, last month?
Yeah, you may have seen it. At the time, it was issued to the Comprehensive Planning Board, but they have approved it, so I wanted to, on the record this evening, officially present that to council for your consideration.
It's the same, it's the same report?
Yes, correct. Correct. This also has, but I also have attached to this the recommendations from the advisory board as well.
Okay, I just want to make a couple of comments on that, if I could, if I'm allowed, Mayor.
No, I'm thinking about, let's go to item number nine. We'll conclude administration comments.
Okay.
We'll go to item number nine, and maybe that would be, well, I guess it really isn't, because that's a capital improvement. Absolutely, no, absolutely.
No, I, I, I...
No, no, absolutely.
No, I just wanted to...
He brought it up as part of his discussion, and I know you have some questions, so go right ahead.
Some thoughts on that, if I could. I see this as one of those defining moments in our, the history of our town, where we define our rural lifestyle. And the thought of going from residential to commercial... And the thought of going from residential to commercial pretty much really, really is a problem for me. Anywhere in our town, with the exception of maybe 27, because there's a barrier, a man-made barrier there, a cemetery that stops it, but anywhere else, on Sheridan, Flamingo, something like that, I'm not really in support of that. And I just want to go on the record and let everybody know that. It's just against our, why we became a town. And I feel very, very strongly about that, and I want to make that clear on the record. I don't think the money is not that important. It's the lifestyle that's important. And I wanted to mention that, you know, wholeheartedly. So I'm not really in support of any commercial. Wanted to make that very, very clear.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may correct the record, the chair of the Comprehensive Planning Board just informed me that although this has been through their board, they did not formally vote on it, and so it's not, it doesn't come with an endorsement from the board, but it did go through the board, so I just want to correct the record.
Okay, so we'll wait. You'll, I'm sure, give us a follow-up report when you do evaluate and give your final recommendations, Noel. We hear what you're, we hear what you're saying. Okay. That concludes administration comments, item number nine. Erica, for the record.
In ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, adopting the schedule of capital improvements for fiscal year 2014 through 2018 pursuant to Chapter 163 Florida statutes, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Erica. Marty? I'm sorry, not Marty. Andy or Emily?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Emily McQuarrie. This is an annual update to the five-year capital improvement element, which is found in the comprehensive plan. It's required to update it annually. The Comp Plan Board unanimously approved this updated language at their November meeting, and we basically took all of the projects that were unfunded and funded in the town's adopted budget of this year and put them in the plan, and they're marked, you know, funded and unfunded as such. This was not a material or content change to the capital improvement plan. That would require a text amendment. This is simply an update to the plan. And there were no, like I said, no material changes, just changes to dates and projects and amounts.
Thank you, Emily.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion to second to approve. Any members of the public wish to comment on this item? See no public comment. Public comment is now closed. Any additional questions, comments, or concerns, council? Steve, I see you shaking your head. Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just want a quick comment that I know, sitting on that board, and I appreciate all the work that the board has done, Noel, and leading that board, and just, it's always, it's always a tedious task to go through these documents and make the updates that need to be made. And so just a note of thanks to that board for the work they did.
Thank you, Steve. And ditto on behalf of the council, Noel, and all the board members. And anybody else, obviously, that provided input? I'm sorry, Freddie?
Yeah. Well, I guess you know what I'm going to be talking about. I mean, I've been talking about it so much, and I've tried to understand it. And what I'm talking about is the reserve. I met with Andy, I met with Marty yesterday, and he pretty well went over a lot of the things, but all he told me is what I already knew, really, and to a point, is there's really no way to tell what's in that reserve. And if you look back at our own records, and then some of the things were said at the last meetings, makes it even more clear. I have something here that Marty gave me yesterday, and you probably don't have it, but what it is, it shows how that has changed.
Can I ask you a question, just to clarify something, Freddie? I don't mean to interrupt, but item number nine has to do with capital improvements. I assume that this reserve component that you're talking about ties into these capital improvements?
If you look in the back, how are we going to fund them?
Okay.
And that's where it is. You look back there, and it's capital project, fund balance, fund balance, and nobody knows what's in that fund balance. I know Marty knows what's in that fund balance since he's been here, but, gentlemen, when we started in 2000, that thing was used and used and used, and it's carried forward. That's the biggest problem. And you can look at it, like, in 2003, we had 2 million something. What was that? You know, we borrowed 5 million. Was that part of the 5 million in there? There's no way we could have accumulated 2.4 million in two years. We were having trouble making our budget. So what happens, and we seen a little bit of it last time, is what goes into that fund? I know there's three, three funds, right, Marty? I think, as you showed me yesterday, three separate funds that they go into. But I don't know if y'all remember, but when South Florida Water Managed District decided to put in that retention area north of Orange Drive and east of US 27, they bought all that property. And they had thousands and thousands of trees that they bought, and they wanted to get rid of them. They gave us $2 million worth of trees. That probably went in that reserve, the way we were using, doing things today. Because here, we took property that we took off the books, and that's part of the reserve. In other words, we anticipate using that for money. I don't doubt that John Canada did that to jump it. 2003, we had 2.4 million dollars in the reserve. My point is this, you know, we did things at the last meeting, and we said we're going to pay it out of reserve. Ever since I've been here, I want somebody to show me that reserve, and nobody's been able to do it. And I understand why. We get all our money upfront for taxes, and it's going, bills are going to be paid. So you really can't look at your bank account and say, we got X amount of money in there, because it's all mixed up, because it's there for bills we're going to pay. My point is, and I'm only going, I'm not going to harp on it, harp on it, is I'm not against these capitalist improvements. I'm against how we're going to pay for them, how we say we're going to pay for them, you know, because I've seen a little bit of what happened at the last meeting, and that could get snowballing. And I'm not against this resolution. I just want to make sure everybody understands that I have a little bit of feelings of how we're going to follow that chart of where the money's coming from.
Okay, Freddie, thank you. Council, any additional questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, we have a motion to second to approve. Erica, call a question, please.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisickelli?
Yes.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes, item number 10.
A resolution of the Town Council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving an agreement with Ansco Incorporated for $96,245, which includes the base bid plus alternate 1A only, to complete the construction of the country estates Fishing Hole Park restroom facility, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into an agreement and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Erica. Andy, you, Emily's gonna.
I'll let her start.
Okay.
All right, Mayor and Council, again, this has been a joint effort of both the Rural Arts Board and the Parks Advisory Board. We had several meetings dating back from 2012. As you know, in 2011, we had applied for a grant from Broward County and received the grant in the amount of $87,150 for the restroom. Therefore, we moved forward with an architect, and the architect made a presentation back in October of 2012 with the Rural Parks Arts Board and the Parks Board, and decided that we could do a prefab structure for approximately $40,000. After that, after that meeting, they came back to the board and said, oops, we, you know, found out that wasn't the actual cost. And that $40,000 number didn't include, you know, the well and the electric and everything like that. That was just the structure. So in the next month, they came back and said the one that the board had liked, the prefab structure, was more like $116,000. So both boards voted to go with a, you know, a new construction instead of doing that. Therefore, we hired CPZ Architects to design the restroom. We put it out to bid, and this includes the well, the septic, electric, all the services. And we received six bids, and the lowest came back at ninety, a little bit over $96,000. So, like I said, the grant will cover 87,150 of that. And they were the lowest bid. I did check all the references. They received glowing references from, you know, everyone down. I checked their credentials and, you know, ran the background checks, and everything came back fine.
So the net cost of the town, less the grant, is approximately $9,000?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Emily. Council?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion to second to approve. Any members of the public wish to comment on this item? See no public comment. Public comment is now closed. Turn it over to you all.
Mayor, before you deliberate, there were two changes to the contract. There was a copy that was placed at your spot on the table tonight, and I just want to tell you what those changes were, just so you're aware what the contract is that you're approving. And I thank Councilmember Fisickelli for catching this. There were a couple of, I'll say, cut and paste errors within the contract that was in the book. The first was on page two, which is the initial whereas clause, had an inappropriate reference, something to a previous job the town had done. And on page three in section 1.4, there was also a reference that didn't belong in this contract. So those have been corrected. The corrected contract, obviously, is the one that's going forward, but that's not what was in your book, and I just want to make you aware on the record of what those changes were.
Thank you, Andy. Again, we got a motion to second to approve. Any additional questions, comments, or concerns? Vice Mayor, Council? Seeing none. Erica, we have a motion to second to approve. Call a question, please.
Whoa, whoa.
I didn't see your hand, Freddie.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I didn't get a chance to get it up.
No, absolutely.
Come sit down, young lady. I want to ask you a couple of questions. I'm sorry, Emily, I should have saved your walking. Emily, I guess, you know, we're going with all plaster and all paint. Is that mainly price for maintenance? Do they find tile takes more maintenance? I know, but I know plastered walls don't hold up more than they're good as tile wall. Was there any thought at all, using any kind of tile? Is there any, I haven't paid any attention over to the question park. Is there any tile on those walls? I didn't, I shouldn't have looked.
I think it's all, we went based on December's recommendations, based on her maintenance of that restroom facility. You know, she made a lot of input to the problems that we've had, you know, based on that. So we went based on December's, you know, recommendations as, you know, her infield experience and the architect's experience with public restrooms. So I'm not sure about the tile specifically, Councilwoman.
I was just curious. I, unfortunately, I, this is the first I got to see. I say this first. I may have seen it before, but I don't think I've seen it in this.
And I do have the full set of plans in my office. If any of you would like to see them, I can provide those to you.
Yeah, okay, no problem.
Is that it, Freddie?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, or concerns, Council? Again, we have a motion to second to approve. Erica, call a question, please.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisickelli?
Yes.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes, item number 11.
A resolution of the Town Council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving the first amendment to the interlocal agreement between the town of Southwest Ranches and the city of Tamarack, to include a commencement date and to include website hosting as an additional service, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute said first amendment and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Erica. Andy?
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. This is actually just a kind of a housekeeping, a couple of different items. There are two changes. One has some financial impact, one has none. The item with no financial impact is changing the official start date to this agreement, which was July of last year, but Tamarack wasn't ready to go. We had some transition issues. They didn't start till August, but we were paying them. So this changes the official start date till August, so it just catches up to where we should be, if that makes sense. We actually started with them in August, so that's, that'll be the first month of the agreement and change. The other item is we're adding web hosting services for our new website. They are hosting the website, and that's the only one with a financial impact. It's $50 a month for them to host that website, which keeps all our IT and everything in the same place. There was one minor change to this agreement at the 11th hour today, when Councilmember Bright Cruz was in my office. On page, page five of the agreement, Appendix C, on web hosting services, there was a clause that indicated web hosting services are on a month-to-month basis and may be terminated at any time. That has now changed to there must be a six-month notice. And I thank Councilmember Bright Cruz for catching that.
I'll make a motion to approve with that adjustment.
Second.
Motion to second to approve. Any members of the public wish to comment on this item? See no public comment. Public comment is now closed. We have a motion to second to approve. Any additional questions, comments, or concerns, Council? Seeing none. Call a question, please, Erica.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisickelli?
Yes.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes, item number 12.
A resolution of the Town Council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving an unanticipated expense not to exceed $4,765 for town hall parking lighting, lot lighting, approving for fiscal year 2013 to 2014 budgetary appropriation from the Capital Projects Fund, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute the work authorization and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Erica. Andy?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. As I know you're all familiar, our parking light, lighting does not meet our dark skies ordinance, and.
Should we have Noel introduce this item? That's what I'm wondering.
You may want to get my photo.
I see him over there shaking his head and smiling.
And in good time, we are getting the lighting changed. We went out to bid and wanted to make sure that we were appropriate LED, that we would find a lighting company that would sign off and certify that it was, would comply with our dark sky ordinance. And we did, after much effort on Sandy's part, were able to get to that point with one vendor. The quote total is $4,765, which, as you know, falls in, within my authority. However, we do have a grant, which Marty reminded me, and I thank him for that. We do have a grant that was available to us for some town hall improvements, and in order for us to spend money out of that, council action is required. So that's the reason that the item is before you tonight. Otherwise, I would have signed off on this, and this baby would have been done.
Thank you, Marty, for the record. Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion to second to approve. Any members of the public wish to comment on this item? He's got a big smile on his face, I know that.
Cheshire grin cat, you know. I'd like to thank the council, the administration, everyone for finally bringing the town into compliance. And as far as whether or not I'm happy, you better believe I'm happy. Thank you.
Thank you, Noel. Any additional public comments? Be careful, Gay, be careful. That concludes public comment. Public comment is now closed. Again, we have a motion to second for approval. Freddie, you have a question?
Well, actually, you may say I'm not talking about the motion, but I should have talked to this about my council comments. Lighting, in this, I don't know if you people know, I live across the canal from a private school, a charter school. They just spent $6 million putting in a football field with full lighting. When I left there tonight, those lights were on bright as you can be. My two neighbors are closer than I am. They're having to buy all kinds of stuff, even, one guy sleeps with earmuffs on, you know, because of the, they have loudspeaker system. But during, you know, when we were talking about that charter school, I should have talked about it then, but Pembroke Pines didn't ask me about it, was ejecting to the, to the lights being there, but they got three on both sides, three on one side, three on the other, full, full lights. And the worst part about it is, those kids are, I guess they want to be announcers all day long. They're practicing with that loudspeaker system and then the drums. Let me tell you something, another thing when you say about that charter school, you better think about.
Thank you, Freddie.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
One other thing I want to do, not right now, but I'm, I'm going to ask Andy if he would move forward to eliminate and ban that color light in town altogether. The parking lot color light that we have is like a crime light, whatever color that is out there, and that pink. But I think we need to ban that color, that style of light in town altogether. So moving forward in the lighting stuff, that's something else we need to fix along the way. I'm thrilled we're coming into compliance. I'm thrilled we're going to LED to save us electricity and whatnot, and it's going to serve our purpose, but moving forward, we need to fix it town-wide.
Hey, Doug, thank you. I saw Andy shaking his head. Any other additions?
Just wanted to comment, just to recognize that not only does this meet the dark sky